Brenda, do you want to say something as started the hearing?
I'm accusing.
Okay, come up and identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Brendan Wyden. My wife Kathy and I own the Narrowsburg Union. We made a proposal a month ago to create a tenancy in the building for a daycare. Steve Dweck with us, if you remember last week, I read a glowing letter from Jay Quaintance, President of Sullivan. Steve Dweck has the ability of SUNY Sullivan and he's guarded by Jay Quaintance and the faculty up there. We also received comments from the board, thank you very much. I think we should address those comments. I just want to say, we will be adding to the project. We're going to be adding an audible enunciator with a key activation at the back exit door. We are inside the hallway to block off the hallway. There is an exterior fence we had that separated the play area from the parking lot.
Put that right here, please.
Yeah, we are making the exterior fence a complete loop with gates so that no toddler can wander off.
Well, parent can grab the other child, kids.
We hope so, but what we've also got is we've got cameras, and these are cameras that are three interior cameras in the hallways just outside the daycare space. And we've got three exterior cameras. These are cameras we have that we've added over time just for the safety of our staff, that we've had no incidents, no issues, but our staff feels more secure. Particularly in the winter, when it gets dark at night, when they can look outside, they can, you know, see what's happening outside. So, all good, and I think we're really well covered. Comments, and I think it'll be a better facility for picking up the comments. So, we're here tonight to ask for your final approval. Listen, Steve Dweck is with us. Steve can answer any questions about the day-to-day operation. That's it.
From the public wish to speak on the daycare. Comments?
My leg is...
Okay, well, talk loud and identify yourself.
Just want to say I fully support.
Who are you, please?
Sorry, Frederick Toomey.
Okay.
174 Bridge Street. So, I fully support what they're up to with this. I think the town needs a facility like this. I have employees that have asked me if there are anything like this. So, desperately needed, so I hope you guys support this improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Frederick. Iris?
I think that...
Oh, yeah.
I can speak very loudly.
To the podium.
Yeah, if you could go to the podium so that the people on Zoom can hear you better, that's why.
I think that this is a great project. I think it's a great project because it's a very necessary project. And I think that with the Wydens behind it, and they do everything according to Hoyle and beyond, I think that this is going to be something that's going to be very wonderful for the children, for the parents, and for this town. Thank you.
What else? Get up your courage. Give you two more minutes, and then we're going to change. They're speaking. Steve, did you want to say any comments while you're here?
Well, certainly, I'm here to answer any questions. I do have some brochures for you guys. What we're looking forward to doing this project, it is much needed. Thank you. There we go, thank you.
You don't want to say anything, Steve?
Nope.
Well, if you would have to answer any questions.
I know, I'm loving it, this is...
Okay, now, at 7:15, we'll close the public hearing on the Narrowsburg Union Daycare Center and open the public hearing on Laura Santana's Street Building, 90 Main. Laura, do you have anything you want to say to open it? Or your engineer, or anybody?
Well, do you have anything?
We're happy to. It's 90 Main Street, 154. My name's Carl Wasner. I'm here with Laura Santana. And we presented the revised proposal to you at the last meeting and are very excited to seek questions, answer them, and ultimately looking to get your approvals on the proposal.
Carl, have you cleared with water and sewer whether you need to put in another tank? Because when Laura did her other building, the restaurant was a problem, the tank wasn't big enough to have a dishwasher and a hot block.
We have two tanks.
Yeah, we've been in close contact with water and sewer, and we've talked to them.
I'm sure you were in close contact. I know you mentioned it, but that's what I wanted to...
Yeah, we talked to them about supply as well as sewage. There's currently two tanks there at the property. And we're also going to be looking at a new water hookup as well because of the sprinkler system.
We're back there that you could do something. The other one, they had to dig up the street and it was a problem.
It was, and then the rock and the rock breaking, and it was...
So, I guess you're safe on that.
Well, yeah, it's a fantastic opportunity, though, you know, and the fact that we have the space to do that if we needed to is really an asset of that property. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Carl? Any comments about the 90 Main Street building renovations?
I do. So, we're just doing brewery, Carl, right now?
Uh, the proposals for the building itself, and one of the tenants is the brewery, but that's not the...
Is it a combined deal?
Is what a combined deal?
The brewery and the rest of it? Is it all in the same application or is it in different applications?
Uh...
Well, it was too different, but we were viewing it as one.
So, two separate applications were submitted.
Okay.
But it being done as one approval.
One approval.
Yeah. Now, Jim, did you review the building plans? Do you have anything you tell us about there before we go on?
Well, I mean, we reviewed, me and Carl looked over a while, and opened, went over the retail space and some part of it, I went over with the guy Russell. Oh, you know, how you know? So, yeah. Yeah, I reviewed.
Okay, now, they gave us different usages for different spaces, you know, in the building.
I think we marked them out.
Right. If they follow them, are we okay with not doing another special use permit for each one?
If you follow them, yeah.
Yeah, if they...
If those uses change, then they're going to have to come back.
Okay, got that. Good with that.
Absolutely, yes.
And Carl, you and me have discussed this many times that as long as it says that's used category, be it A or M or Y, U, as long as it fits in that category, you're okay, because it's according to New York State Building Codes, that's same use, you know, same use.
Correct.
But if you go outside, they might come back.
Right, that's the rules, yeah.
As you can see, if he changes his usage, it's going to change parking requirements and all that stuff.
In fact, you guys should have a set of that, what I approved. You should have a set of that, what I approved for those uses.
I didn't know you had seen them approved.
Oh, I seen them. I marked them and I stamped. So, you guys should have that.
Is that on what you gave us?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Yeah, I have it here.
Okay. As long as you have it.
It's not important that I'm good with it, it's important that you're good with it.
Well, it's important that you have what
Yes.
that was okay, same, approved the same stuff.
Anyone else like to speak?
I have Amy on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead.
Amy?
You have to, ah, there. Okay, fantastic. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hi, everybody. So, I just want to say, first of all, we're super excited about this project. Thank you so much to the Santanas for taking this on. I think everyone is going to be absolutely overjoyed to have this space alive again and Main Street hopping with wonderful activities. So, we're 100% behind the project. So, we do want to register two concerns that we have. We're just the, you know, we're right next door to the building. And there are two things that we wanted to bring up during this meeting. And one of them is, we're concerned about having recorded music played on loudspeakers outside. The river is beautiful, we so enjoy living there, we like the peace of the river. We understand that, you know, there's going to be outdoor seating for the brewery, and that's great. We're not worried about human voices. That's totally fine. We are just concerned about living with, you know, constant sort of someone else's playlist in our, you know, as we're like looking at the river. So, I'm wondering if there's anybody there that could address that. And also, the other issue, which might seem trivial, but to us, since we're just right there, is the issue of lighting. So, we would like to work closely with the brewery and their outdoor space or just at least have a conversation about what kind of lighting they might be thinking of installing. We would like to encourage something sort of like downlighting, something soft, no bright security lights. As you can imagine, it's just sort of right there in our backyard, so to speak. So, those are really our two main concerns. We want to say that we understand that with a big project like this, and it's going to be a social hub, you know, there are going to be events, parties, even live music from time to time. But it's really the daily, the daily ongoing outdoor recorded music that we're concerned about. So, does anybody have any, is there anyone there that can speak to our concerns?
Well, Amy, Amy, first, the lighting.
Just one second.
Let Ed talk. Go ahead, Ed.
Amy, the lighting cannot leave the property lines.
Amy, thank you very much. Amy, thank you very much for being so supportive. That is appreciated. The brewery people were just whispering something in my ear. You know, obviously, right next to you is the driveway area, right? So, there's no plans for any outdoor activities in that driveway area other than, you know, the occasional vehicle going by. Over by the actual restaurant brewery area, if there is outdoor seating at some point in time, you know, we're not even there yet. But, you know, in terms of music, I believe that there's already about how loud things can be and the hours that they can be. Maybe Russell wants to add something to that.
Let me add that. Hello, Amy. Hi, folks, Russell Miller, part of the brewing team with Jacob sitting over here. I completely, absolutely understand everything that you've just voiced there, Amy. I appreciate you bringing that to the board and to the members today here. I think the important thing to consider as we go forward is as we take our next step to get the building licensed for the production of all of this, all of the parameters of all of those things will be put into consideration. And we will be governed by that as well. But I think the primary thing to bring up here is the fact that, you know, we are very tuned in. I'm a local resident myself. I live just down the hill from you. I see you regularly walking past. I'm fully aware of, you know, how important it is that we have, you know, a respectful and collaborative relationship with all of our neighbors as what will be local business owners, which is very exciting. But we want a long and we want a harmonious relationship with you. So, all of these things do need work, and they do need a plan. And we will bear it in mind, and we will have absolute consultation with you to ensure that we have as little impact on you other than just making sure there's a comfortable chair for you to enjoy a nice cold brew.
That, I have to say, we're really looking forward to that. I mean, I can see that we're going to be bringing our guests to your brewery. That's going to be our regular place for us to be. And we're very, very excited to have that hospitality next door to us. I mean, it's just going to be awesome. So, and thank you for being so amenable to hearing about our concerns and taking them into consideration as you move forward with all of your plans.
Absolutely, and we will remain in touch and keen to learn and keen to work with you. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So, is there anybody else?
If anybody else wants to...
No one else has their hand raised that I can see? No one's waving at me on the screen?
Yeah, it's not... It's not... Go ahead.
So, I have a question or a comment. I know that we got the response back from the county, and they said that the applicant had a creative approach to addressing the parking needs. I was just doing a little more research. And apparently, unfortunately, our zoning code doesn't really allow shared parking. So, my concern was, and I, you know, just hearing different people and stuff like that, what if, and I brought this up the last time, you know, because we are going to, you know, they, when we vote, you...
You're specific for that you're talking about?
I'm specifically stating that in our code at this point, because that did not pass, they didn't do the resolution. According to the code, our code, I'm correct, there's no shared parking in our zoning code. So, what...
There's no provision that says you can share parking?
No, there's no shit, no, there's no provision that says no shared parking. So, I'm just going to give you an example because I want to be on the record, because I am concerned. Because the other day, I think it was Thursday, and last week and the week before, I came down the street and there were 45 cars, I counted. And then there were about 15 cars in the parking. And my concern is, and it's really more about the safety, because we are going to increase the density of the population as to opening up a business and so on and so forth, retail. So, my concern is, is that, let's say, brewery opens up and all of a sudden Narrowsburg Lumber, and I know you addressed this, said that, oh, we have a contract, we have an agreement. What if the agreement is non-existent because something happens? Okay, what happens, let's say, the feed mill says, I don't want it anymore. Now, we as a board and a town approve something based on that. Now, something happens. Now, you've got like 50, 60 cars down there, and now where are we going to put them all? We've always had the existing parking behind the bank, okay? And it is not incumbent upon the planning board to figure this out. It's more like the town board has to figure this out. And unfortunately, I think the town board, I feel like we've been handcuffed a little bit trying to figure this all out, because we've just grown so much. You know, and the thing is, and I know, we've always had a parking issue. So, even in, like, if we even look at the comprehensive plan they just approved, everybody is aware of this. I don't know, they mentioned, I don't know how many times for parking, how many things for shortage of parking. So, that is my concern, is that if there's an issue, and then, you know, we didn't allow Uncle Vinny's when they came. We didn't allow the Wydens, we didn't allow Barbara Loach, because it was only based on, you know, what they were doing. Unfortunately, there's, you know, there's nothing I can do about the parking issue. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention and to the public, because I am concerned. That's all.
Yeah, just before this, we had the parking committee
Yeah.
here at 5 o'clock, and they were looking at the comprehensive plan and changing that. And that it actually is doing away with downtown business parking.
Right.
So, it's to be going, the guideline in the zoning, as it's stated at this moment, is actually on the way out.
Right, but it's still, it's still a, it's still...
It can also be used as a detriment to any business development.
And I'm not against that. I think it's great that we're developing the downtown. But unfortunately, if something happens, or these businesses with the agreement says, that's it, then what are you going to do?
We still have parking without those, too.
No, you do not, because each property owner or business should have, they should, this was said, setting the precedence for allowing property owners to increase density without parking. Town requires that you should have your own parking.
But that's all.
I'm just bringing this point up, that's all. I know it's physically impossible, but I'm bringing this up because it was a concern, because there was a track jam. I'm not reading anything. I did my research on these are my notes, and as well as, there's nothing in the code. I'm just, my words, my words. My words, and from the zoning, okay? And also the comprehensive plan and the master plan. I'm just bringing it up because it is a concern of mine. It was a concern before. It's always been a concern. That's all. Right, but it's been abandoned, and it wasn't, it wasn't... It was burnt down, excuse me, and it's not been in use, I'm just saying. And it was, had two apartments, and it was just a funeral, I'm not saying just, it was a retail, and it was also a funeral home, okay? Now, we're having a brewery, and how many people are we going to have? I'm just curious.
Nine times out of 10, though, Mary, if you, if Main Street is filled up with cars, the parking lot is underutilized. Like you said, maybe there's 10 or 15 cars in there.
Right.
Capacity for at least another 30 or 40 more.
Right, but we are setting the precedent until things change. That's what I'm stating.
There we are. It's been done a long time ago.
Right, but that was a waiver, wasn't it?
No, how many people came to the supercarlors?
Lot of.
I've lived right here in town since I was, I'm sorry.
I'm just stating my thoughts, that's all.
I mean, since beginning of time, sorry, I'll let you have a turn next. Since the beginning of time, I feel like anytime there was ever a funeral, whether it was on a Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, didn't matter, Main Street was full, and they would go all the way down to Little Lake Erie, people parked in all different parking spots. And it wasn't on one occasion. I can give you 20, 30 times, their Main Street's full. Something else, I've taken, I've noticed, just since this is a big, always a big meeting.
Yeah.
I go down to Main Street quite often.
Yeah.
And I can tell you that many people that either work at a business or own a business are typically parking on Main Street. And I think that's something to be, you know, noted, and those people should maybe utilize the other parking lots, because the library parking lot's always empty. And our other parking lot up behind the old bank building is always empty. But again, we've had funeral homes as always, I mean, it was always packed.
No, I couldn't, no.
And I don't think you're going to have anywhere near the amount of people at a brewery.
I'm just bringing it up. Sure, okay. Sure.
Please come forward.
Come forward.
Say your name.
As the prior owner of the funeral home. We always, the funeral home was added to the building in the 50s. And we always had a fire code, and we were allotted 110 people. So, that's anywhere from 50 to 75 cars in parking spaces, because more than likely, one person came at a time in their own car. So, when you're corresponding to what you're trying to say is about the shared parking, whether it's written in the code, it was always a tolerance of all the other businesses, the mill, the lumber, the school, that those parking spaces could be utilized. And we never had a problem. We actually were able to line up a funeral in Main Street and have our family cars behind it, and you'd have 40, 50 cars without a problem. So, you know, maybe what you're seeing more so is the issue with the laundrette, where that was a car wash and laundry facility with four spots. And now they're parking on the road, but we never had that issue on Main Street.
Can I have Ed talk? Oh, Ed, go ahead, Ed.
That there is a difference.
Your teacher, you know how good things are.
So, project, I learned how to do that.
Project it to the microphone, please.
I think that there is a difference between respect for the dead and their families that people definitely acquiesce to discomfort about getting through Main Street. That's a very different scenario than a wonderful, and I am in favor of the project. It's not, that is not part of it, but as far as parking is concerned, they are, although they all include vehicles, there are two different aspects. One is a very solemn respect for someone who has passed and respect for their family. And another is for a thriving business that is utilizing the space. That's all I have to say now.
Okay.
Jim Crowley, I'm sure most of you know who I am. So, anyway, if you take all downtown Main Street, right? And I take the occupancy loads of all them buildings and the parking spots that are down there, none of it comply. Should we shut it all down?
No, I didn't say that. I'm just concerned about it.
So, are you going to stymie growth because you don't have parking? You got to figure parking out. Someone's got to figure it out, which tonight was the start of what we were working on. But you can't stymie growth, you got to figure out the parking. So, as it is right now with the occupancy load of Main Street, you don't have enough parking for it. So, should I go down and start closing out Main Street? No. That's the comment I want.
As someone who worked on Main Street during the 70s and 80s, when Teck's Market was there, we had a constable on each end to try to get you through. And if you left your parking space in the public parking lot to go for lunch, probably had a problem finding a place where you came back, and we lived through it. So, you know, it's been more business than we'll probably see now. And things can happen, and it goes on.
Okay, you're saying that in the 70s and 80s, the density was higher than it currently is? Yes.
Because everything that's at Pete's Market was on Main Street.
So, currently, to your eyes, Main Street is slow and under-densified compared to what it used to be?
No, I think it was very overdensified then.
It was.
A disaster for getting, we managed it.
The chatterbox.
It can be, it's better now, and I don't think it will ever be that bad.
Right.
So, you know, we're not looking at somebody going up the supermarket shopping on the weekend.
Thank you.
Stuart.
Steve Stewart?
Yes, hi. I'm Stephen Stewart. I think that the parking can be pretty much a red herring to either defeat or promote growth. And I think that there are some really creative solutions that we can all work out to provide parking. If you take a look at the Village of Woodstock, they are parking constrained in a very similar way in which the hamlet of Narrowsburg is constrained. Yet, they have developed a parking lot off-site, and they run a shuttle bus on weekends to the downtown area. I think that with some creative planning and cooperation and collaboration, the town of Tustin could do the same. The fire department owns the ball field off of Tomorrow Lane. We do need to reserve a part of that for a landing zone. But what, you know, I could see great possibilities of having parking on weekends at that ball field, and the town have an electric shuttle take people up and down, you know, from their cars to Main Street. The same with the former ball field that the Wyden Zone. You know, why couldn't that be entered into some kind of a creative parking, shared parking solution to the downtown business district's parking dilemma? It does not have to be something that stops development. It is a marvelous opportunity for the town to really collaborate with a lot of different entities that help make the town what it is. And by the way, yeah, the Santanas are going to do a stellar job with that building. You see what they did. You see what they did with the former Kelly's Adult Home on Bridge and Main. I fully support what they are wanting to develop that, that, that whole property into. Thank you.
Okay, anybody here?
You just said. I don't know if you're all familiar with, um, over in Connyanga Lake, but the Chamber of Commerce over there on weekends runs it, runs shuttles back and forth to the parking lot behind, behind the courthouse to the restaurants. And there's no reason we couldn't develop something like that in our downtown area to, and use the parking area that Steve was just talking about.
Okay, at this point, we'll close the public hearing.
Your job before the next public comment is take this and put it here. No, I, then I can't hear any of yours. All right.
Think I asked you. Okay, we'll open the meeting with flags to the flag, please.
Okay, see it better. Okay, that's okay.
Ed's right there.
I said, do you have Brad or Ken on for the comments that he wanted them to make?
Yeah, but they said they wouldn't be here.
I know they said they wouldn't be here. Are they on the?
No, I don't.
Okay, then we skip that, I know.
Okay, so let's do, uh.
Okay, Ed has put down here a moment of silence for the people praying, so. I, I also wish to acknowledge former planning board, longtime member James Lawper, who recently passed. He's a very active member in the earlier years when I first joined the board. And we'd like to remember him for his good work on the board. Have a moment of silence for Jim, please. Okay, Amy, are you ready with minutes?
We don't read them.
Right. I'm gonna make a motion.
We'd like to make a motion on the minutes that Amy put out for us a few days ago.
I'll make a motion.
Our motion is second. Any comment? Approval of the motion for approval of the minutes, Ed?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Me, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
I think I got you all. A motion carried. That takes us to old business. The Narrowsburg Union Narrow Building, Big, uh, Daycare Center by Brendan and Kathy Wyden. We had a favorable comment for public hearing. We have the two thirty-nine M. Two thirty-nine M back from Freda Eisenberg at the county stating that the county is a supporter of, this type of thing, the kids daycare, healthy kids daycare, and they seem to be in support of it, so. Uh, Brendan has altered his plan slightly to include some enclosure for safety of the children and other than that, they're staying the same, right?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have a comment on the board or before we go on? Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, healthy kids daycare at the Narrowsburg Union?
I'll second it.
John? John and Joe? Any comments on the motion on the floor? Okay, call for a vote on the motion, Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Me, yes. Uh, Barry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
And, um, you wanna make a note that Mary refused herself, is that why she's on the table?
That's why Mary left the board, yes. Next item of business, Laura Santana's application for the brewery and former Rasmus and Building. Also seen many favorable comments here tonight, so I guess we'd like to get rid of the plywood on Main Street and move forward and safely. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Joe, seconded by Mary. Ed?
I'll second.
Any comment from the board members? Okay. Vote on the motion, Ed?
Yes.
John? Peter? Me, yes. Barry?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Be nice to Jim, guys, and do what he says.
What was the UDC's comment?
They didn't get back to us as far as I know. Ed, did you get anything from UDC?
No, they didn't.
No, we only got back.
They tend to cut me out, so I don't pay much attention to.
Oh, they were notified and he gave them a certain day, right?
They were notified in time, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, sometimes they do, but they haven't been. Uh, we have one other item that we don't have listed on here. Uh, this was a letter to Ed that came on April twenty-sixth. Uh, no, excuse me.
Oh, I don't have that.
I just gotta move to a different piece of paper. We received a letter from Sean Harrington. Ed, it's been an honor to serve on the planning board these last four years. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, I cannot continue to serve and hereby submit my resignation extractive on this day, April twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Sincerely, Sean Harrington. So regret, Sean was a good member. He paid a lot of attention to reading everything that was given to us. It's a job and we're gonna miss his input.
I, I sent him a letter on behalf of the board thanking him for the service to the town for the past few years and thanking him again for his, uh, the way he looked things over and paid attention to what we were doing.
Great, good job, Ed. Hey, I think that brings us to new business, SVG, eight-year-old company, Eight Main Street.
Amy, who's submitting the SVG?
Steve, uh, said everything to you this afternoon, I believe. I found out two hours ago he wasn't gonna be here.
Me too.
Oh. So he told me he submitted everything this afternoon. Yeah, he's forwarded over to Ed and Ed's sent to the board. Um, you all have a packet of it and we have it up on the screen as well. So it's the same application, this one, um.
Now, this application did not have a whole lot of information on it. So some people have discerned some things from other sources. Maybe you can tell us what the plan is and what they're going to do, Janine, because it doesn't have it on the application.
Wait, wait.
The man, the microphone man has to work.
Come on. I am. Okay, I'm Janine Hector. I'm here to represent Steve Gregoretti. He apologizes for not being here tonight. Um, this location behind the Tustin Cup, he created, um, began as just maybe, um, it was going to be like storage, a garage. He was shoring up the foundation. And it kinda developed into, well, maybe I'll make it into a space. People are working remotely. There's a nice view of the river down here. And it kinda morphed into something a little bit more than just a garage. So right now, I don't know if you saw the letter from Debbie Jaegel. She's a real estate broker who's renting the space from Steve. It's not retail, it's basically a space for her agents to meet with clients occasionally to sign documents. Not, not, not for traffic. There's not gonna be much traffic down there at all.
How can you access it besides walking down to the bridge?
Right now, that's about it.
There's no way down from the stairwell.
No, there's not.
Amy?
No.
Speak up.
Go ahead, Ed.
Janine? Hello?
Hi.
Janine? Did you, did you guys put an addition on the building back there?
He did, yes. Yeah.
But we can't accept the papers then, because you'll have to create a site plan. Now you've changed the footprint of the building. So we have to have a full engineered site plan.
I'll let Steve know.
And that's where it'll have to say, we can table it tonight. So we have to have your site plan and construction plans for the building to plan.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
On Ed's suggestion.
I have a question. Wasn't that, you said it was built as a garage?
He, that was his intention to begin with, to store his equipment. Basically just storage and you know how he is with his ideas, just kinda thought, well, maybe I'll make it another rental space.
What about the art gallery that was in there that is now?
Yeah, she left. Um, she was going to move out of the area, so she gave up the space. And, you know, we have someone else in there.
So I think.
We have a question. Oh, it doesn't matter, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
It's not public time, sorry.
Did you have a question?
No, no, there was a public comment on here, but it's not public time, sorry.
Okay, I think we're to the point of table it this, this month until we get better information on what happened to the building and.
Yeah, yeah, you really have to speak to Steve directly. I wasn't there during the construction.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing, but I didn't.
Yeah.
Right, it's gonna be a little bit of.
Time.
Okay.
You say no, then it's gotta come apart?
You don't wanna do that.
No. That's the thing.
And I'm wondering.
There's no parking in the back.
Is this a dirt bullet? Just on a lower level?
You didn't see your picture.
Did you see the picture?
It's a picture.
Behind the building for fire?
That's what I'm saying, is it, does it require your sprinklers?
I think the whole building.
Can I direct your questions to the building inspector?
Yeah.
Jim, is that road behind the building a fire lane?
That is for fire access only.
I don't see how they're gonna be able to operate back there.
All right, you'll have to turn your head. Sorry, can't turn it.
It's a new structure, yeah.
I can't get the up, this, uh, they're all upside down. This is before.
All right, come, can you go to the last one? Well, this is the new. Yeah, that's the mall over there. And increase the footprint of the, yeah. That's the new spot.
Okay, I have to just come back.
Which you can't access, I believe, for Main Street.
That's something else, maybe he can put in the apartment doors and stairs down.
Janine, can you, can you get, can you get to that from Main Street?
No.
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 So the only way to get to that is to walk around.
Right.
Around that.
Second exit?
That's a fire, he said that's a fire lane.
Fire.
Yeah.
That doesn't need a second exit. You'd never fit one forty-nine people in it.
And also it's.
Yeah.
Got lots of windows and so. Oh, but you've got the driveway there behind it, so.
Oh, come on now.
All right, so we know where we're at.
All right.
Okay. All right.
Any board comments?
No.
Are you allowed to have, like, uh, an entrance to a business or area on a fire road?
I don't know.
That I know of.
Cause that road. Nothing in code that says, Jake, that's no. Fire access just deals with the roadside. Okay, that'd be twenty-five foot, twenty-foot wide road. Thirteen-six, unobstructed from the ground to the thirteen-six and just be able to support eighty thousand pounds. That's the only credit.
If someone say, going to that business or to drive back there and have a car back there blocking the road, would that be legal?
Yes, they, that they can't. Yeah, no cars are supposed to be back there, even though there are cars back there all the time.
Right. I know, like, when we live down there. We, with that building that was built, that was the turnaround, that was a three-point turn right there, too. Crackdown, turn around there and then.
Loading and unloading, loading, unloading, there's LP tanks back there for delivery.
Those trucks can't turn around down there.
No, they have to.
Any other board comments? Every building has propane tanks back there, don't they?
No, it's new and it's buried.
Yes, all the tanks are gone, there's just a buried tank back there.
Oh, okay. Community tank, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's probably safer and meter off and, and all the small ones. Any other board comment? Well, if we.
I'm, I'm working on a new member. Uh, she's a nurse at, uh, Harris Hospital, which is changed names so many times, I can't remember what it is now. She lives up towards lava.
He's looking at talking to somebody, another person. She's a nurse at Paris, which is Guard Health. And it's a possible new member, but he has not specified a name. They couldn't hear you, Ed, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. By the town board.
The town board.
But it's usually upon recommendation from, from the, the, uh, planning chair. Uh, but the, the town board will need to accept the resignation of Sean. From the the planning chair, but the the town board will need to accept the resignation of Sean and then they will. They need to appoint somebody.
Is there an open call for people to submit or just upon recommendation?
From my office, we've always understood that anybody can put a request in to be on any committee or board and then that will go to the town board. And if there's an opening, then they will have that discussion. If there's not an opening, it'll kind of be filed. So. You're ever interested? My folder's waiting for your name.
Any public comment?
Yes, I have a comment. I have a comment about the real estate office. If she's putting a real estate office in there, an associate broker has to be a designated agent. So she would have to have an associate broker run that office. She cannot do it herself. So legally, legally, you cannot have an office without an associate broker. That's not not my business. I just hear heard that. She should know the rules.
She labeled herself as.
It's the broker owner of happens in.
But you're saying broker owner also has to have an associate?
So if she has, she has an office in Forest.
So she'll be in Forest.
So this would be a satellite office. So if I wanted to open a satellite office in another area, in another building, I would have to have an agent that is an associate broker, has a broker's license, working under me. So for that, she'd have to have an associate broker working under her that would be running that office.
Unless she sits there herself.
She cannot do that. She already is running the office in Forest.
Well, she could put her associate there, that's.
So that's up to the department state and that would be illegal.
But Dawn, she can't pick an office? She can't say, I want to be in Narrowsburg, put an associate broker in?
She can't. Yeah, she can do. She would have to make Narrowsburg her primary office then. She has to run the primary office and associate broker can run another office for her.
Okay.
I'll see if it should be done. It's not technically. Any other public comment?
Amy Yost has a few questions and Brian Mendoza also had a question. Amy?
Hi, well, no, my questions were were addressed earlier about the outdoor music and the lighting, so that that was. The the that note was in reference to those earlier questions that were already addressed, but thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Yeah, my question was answered, but I I will I will follow up about the open planning board seat directly. Thanks.
You're welcome. And.
Is there a permit issued for the building that was done? Behind the building?
No. No. Steve Stewart has a question. I know, I do. Yeah. Ready to go. Hold on, Steve. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, so it sounded to me, from what I heard, that it it sounds like the planning board was not even aware that this lower level behind eight or underneath eight Main Street was developed into some kind of. Commercial space. And I'm kind of puzzled about that. You know, it it seemed that Ed alluded to there had been no. Nothing before the planning board and how how does that happen that a that a basement? Becomes transformed into a viable commercial space without. The overview or an oversight of the planning board. And was there even a permit?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
All right, Stephen, let me answer your question.
Thank you.
So this wasn't a planning board oversight. This was a. This was a little birdie brought this to my attention, oh, maybe a month or two ago, about all this work being done. And how would you know what is being done? Can you see through a brick building to the backside of it? So this was all done during COVID. And it wasn't until I found out about it and then addressed it. Of course, I can't give a building permit for it because it needs to go to the planning board first. Well, that's the answer to that question.
So then how could it even be occupied?
Illegally. Well, illegally. I mean, come on, you were a code enforcement official. People do stuff without coming all the time.
Illegal. It's an illegal occupation of a space.
Correct, but they're not occupying it now.
Good. All right, thanks.
All right.
Now you know why you got the job.
That's why, Janine. There you go.
Okay. Anybody else here? At least everybody's pretty much smiling.
That's a good thing. Thank God.
Our next meeting is when, Amy? I know what it is. It's May twenty-fourth, Tuesday, the same day as grievance that I need this hall and can't have. So I'm taking the office over.
Oh, what time?
Two to four and six to eight. So I will not be having Zoom either. If you're using that.
Um. I can, I mean, I can do Zoom prior to that if you wanted.
I can what?
Wait, what are you doing? What's happening?
Two to four and six to eight. I'm going to be meeting in the office because this hall sleeps at night. I'm just gonna stay there both times.
Okay.
So May twenty-fourth?
May twenty-fourth is.
So I know that we will be having a meeting because I got a call of something that will be presented. Should be coming into Jocelyn within a couple of days, so. She can start dispersing it. It's a simple subdivision, so. I won't say it's going to be canceled. I think it's gonna happen. Yes, Jim.
Will you have an answer for me?
On this? No, I don't know how to answer it.
Well, the applicant probably want to proceed forward, sure. I can't have him proceed forward until you guys resolve. I don't know if you want to have.
Is this?
An executive session?
Is this an item that, yeah, we could have an executive session with you. That's what I was just going towards. So let's do that.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
No, you can't.
Oh, I went executive, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna go through executive session. So. What do we call the item? Confrontation consultation with. Code enforcement officer?
Not sure what the like legal terminology would be for that.
I don't know.
Ken's not here and I wasn't.
Ken wasn't here and I missed his call.
Maybe we'll listen next month and talk to Ken and see how you want to address that.
Maybe that would be the smarter thing to do because.
He has knowledge.
Okay, but he called me today, but I didn't get his call, so I don't know what he wants done. Or how to handle it.
Table it next month.
If that's something you can handle.
That's fine.
Okay.
So we'll make a motion to table it. I'll make the motion to table it till next month. Yes?
Okay. With that being said, we have a motion to table. One of our previous approvals that is not working out so well with Jim. And any further comment on that? Take a vote on this motion, Ed?
Aye.
John? Peter?
Yes.
Me.
Aye. Mary?
Aye.
Barry? Joe? Okay, at this point, we will go to executive session, then when we come out, we will close the meeting.
Yep.
So.
So we're into an executive session. I thought you were gonna table it till next month.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, I'm making the motion to close the meeting.
Thank you.
Can I have a second?
All in favor? Okay, good.
Happy good night, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
If if the good Lord, if the good Lord is willing, I will be sitting there next week, next month.
Wonderful. Look forward to seeing you. Look forward to seeing you.
You won't recognize me, Mary.
Oh, do I need to pick you up?
I only weigh a hundred and fifty pounds.
Oh, I can throw you over my shoulder then.
Didn't carry me here.
You want me to pick you up? I'll call you. I'll I'll call you.
I'll talk to you about it between now and then, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.